One o'clock, and so I will call this meeting to order. As Chairman Hartgrove is not with us in person, he's asked me to chair the workshop and the meeting in her absence. Casey Griffin on our staff will call the roll. Casey?
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen. Ms. Kim. Dr. House. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman.
Here.
Vice Chairman, you have eight members present.
Thank you, Casey. I declare that a quorum is present, and we are duly convened. I also to further declare that Mr. Gordon Ferguson is excused. Pursuant to Section 8 of Policy 1.400, the board's meeting policy, workshops are meetings of the state board sitting as the committee of hold. Section 1 subsection E of the same policy, in accordance with TCA 844, requires all votes taken during electronic meetings of the board or meetings when one or more member is participating remotely be taken by call of the roll. In accordance with this policy and the law, I move that the state board dissolve itself into committee of the whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Is there a second? You have a second from Mr. Edwards. Mr. Griffin, will you call the roll for this motion?
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Jensen. Ms. Kim. Morrow. Madam Chairman Hartgrove?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight ayes.
Thank you, Casey. I had to clear then that we are in the committee of the whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Before we go into the agenda, I would like to welcome everyone here. I'll also ask our executive director if she has any upfront comments.
Not much for me. I'm excited to dig in. We've got some interesting presentations from the National Center for Assessment, from some of our colleagues at the State Department. So I expect it to be a good fruitful conversation this afternoon. We do miss Chairwoman Hartgrove, but so glad you're joining us via WebEx. Thank everybody for being with us.
Thank you. Yes, we do miss Chairwoman Hartgrove, and I will try to do the best I can, but I know I won't be able to do as well as she does.
And if you would allow me to thank you publicly by Chairman Eby, I thank you so much for filling in for me. I regret that I cannot be there in person, but I'm certainly thankful for the opportunity to join you all remotely. So thanks so much.
So what the agenda, and the first item that we have is Center for Assessment. Identify yourself.
Yes, sir. All right. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the board. We're very grateful to be here. I promise I'll do a proper introduction of my organization and myself and my colleague, Will Loyer. It's just a pleasure to be here. I was joking with some folks before the meeting. It's been a long time since I've not been in front of a bunch of Zoom squares, so it's good to be interacting with humans. It's good to be in the room with all of you and delighted to share some remarks today. And there's two primary questions that we hope to speak to today. We're going to talk a little bit about reporting assessment results in light of some of the challenges entered by the pandemic, and we're going to talk a little bit about some advice we have about analyzing. My colleague Will and I tag-team that. I thought I'd start by telling you a little bit of what our organization is. So the Center for Assessment, that's our full name, the National Center for the Improvement of Educational Assessment. Most people call us the Center for Assessment or the Center for sure. We're based out of Dover, New Hampshire, which is where I'm based, and there's 13 professional associates. So you've got two of them here today. You've got 15% of our capacity right here in the room. We work with 35 states currently in various ways through things like technical advisory committees and some targeted technical assistance and other ways, but fully, we have about 80 projects right now. We also work with organizations like CCSSO, and we work with some districts such as Chicago Public Schools, Gwinnett County, Georgia. We'd work on grants and other kinds of projects. So we try to stay busy in the space of, as you see here in the slide, helping with the design, implementation, and validation assessment and accountability systems. That's primarily in service to large-scale systems that satisfy requirements of ESSA, EXSA, but again, we also work with some districts that operate under those conditions. Another thing I like to tell folks about our organization that may not have a deep familiarity with us is that we're committed to open access and all of our ideas and our work. Not a commercial organization in the sense that we have proprietary intellectual property. I like to joke with folks that if you have a good idea that's going to help improve assessment accountability and help kids learn and achieve, and you want to keep it a secret, don't tell us because we're going to tell everybody. We're all about distributing good ideas to really help in the practice of assessment and accountability. Look here. Telling me I'm denied. While we're working on that, my next slide is just to tell you. Oh, perfect. Yeah. I was going to say, I do know this. I do know how to tell you about myself without a slide, so I was prepared to go on, but not too deep into the slide deck. So I've been at the center since 2008, so I've been there a few years. Prior to that, I was the Associate Superintendent at the Georgia Department of Education, so which is where I'm from. I'm born and raised in Atlanta, so if you hear me say y'all and you say, wait, I thought this guy was from New Hampshire. That's the things working there. Some of the things I work on, I work with the accountability systems and reporting. It's a state collaborative. We've got about 40 states involved in that through the Council of Chief State School Officers, serve on a number of state technical advisory committee, and then like many of my colleagues, I primarily distribute ideas through publications, presentations, and projects. So I'm going to pass the baton to my colleague, Will. Let him introduce himself, and he's actually going to take you into the first chunk of content, and then you'll get me back.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Will Loyer, and I've been with the center since 2019. And previous to this, I worked in some of those places that do keep proprietary information about testing. Worked at Pearson Quest RET, most director of the [inaudible]. I currently serve on a couple of technical advisory committees. One both related to English assessment, and like Chris, at the center, I work with states, charter management stations and other stations that work on innovations, help them with theories of action related to their assessment system. As Chris mentioned in today's presentation, we're dividing it into two. One relates to promising practices for communicating assessment results, and the other one has to do with the kinds of analyses that can be conducted to better understand the impact of COVID-related on students. I'm going to start with the first. To begin, I think many of us are familiar with the challenges this year in some states. Not necessarily, there have been, some states have modified their test content, focused on standards or reduced test forms. There have been some standard administration conditions. I think almost universally, all states have expanded their testing windows, and those changes are factors that affect the patients. And those changes, together with individual level changes, which are harder to verify, like changes in opportunity to learn, changes in test-related evaluation, affect individual or interpretation. And the third kind of challenge are those that affect, that operate at the group level. Reduced participation, especially in any participation rate, because you don't know the reasons why, don't always know the reasons why students who didn't test, didn't test. And any group differences, participation rates for any of the prior tests or individual those would affect group test score use. So to address these challenges, these challenges have implications for reporting. Most of us at the center, all of us at the center, strongly advise against state results for high-stakes purpose summary level. I have an asterisk next to that because I think in [inaudible] assessment, special case, there are special considerations there. Believe that summary, well, no, the summary results based on non-representative tested groups can't be applied to the full population of students. That's an important consideration, especially when participation rates have changed from prior years. Longitudinal comparisons of trend and growth are going to be influenced by the degree to whether data are comparable and complete, and also within-year comparability at multiple schooling pool, the district are also influenced by the degree that data are completely comparable. We have a couple of sets of public reporting recommendations. This part includes things to [inaudible]. I consider certain features and some caveats to add in reporting initiatives. So if conditions don't support a given comparison, then some of the problematic features that may show up in reports and typically show up in test report releases are data displays that encourage a longitudinal comparison. And also explicit comparisons within and across the reporting level. Those, it would be a good idea to remove those if the conditions don't support those particular. Recommend adding context or caveats to reports, such as presenting participation and enrollment advance or together with results or both of those things, including and including about limits interpretation. If not comparable to prior years applies, then this is a caveat that it would be prudent to put in a report release. The other set of recommendations is to consider initiatives that you may not have done before or may not have done extensively, such as support to accompany media release, having media on the results. Here's specific guidance on appropriate interpretation or use and use, especially if it differs from prior years, and resources for parents, educators, and others, and also reports of special studies, which we'll discuss now. Back over to Chris.
Thanks, Will. And I'm just going to extend one point that he made. Well, actually, let me add two things. One is he mentioned importance of context with enrollment and participation data. Some states are releasing that in stages. They're releasing their participation enrollment data prior to leasing. Gives the field an absorb that information. This is about trends and student achievement, so. Find the point about you have some time space there, which accomplish some of the we've got, and I'll end with that, but we do have explicit documents on our website, nca.org, one about recommendations for reporting, even include some sample language to use to accompany reports. If that's of interest, anything Will says, if you want to do it live. So we've got some documents that some of us have worked on. So as Will mentioned, we're going to switch to talking about analysis of data, kind of in the mode now, helping support decision-making and planning when it comes to, hey, how can we understand the impact of the pandemic spend on student? How can we use that to inform our initiatives and tenant? Wanted to start with some guiding principles. By the way, I think Will, we plan to go about half an hour. We hope to have time for your question at any point, but certainly. Some of those principles, higher-level analyses are going to be more trustworthy than lower-level. Obviously, that's not a new insight in the pandemic. That's a good practice for achieving a higher level of certainty anytime reporting decision-making with data analysis, but we think it's particularly important in a, simply means nothing more complicated than state level or district level, trustworthy than say student group, school level. So as you crawl down the unit of analysis, your ability to make. As Will mentioned, with reporting, the same holds true with this. Really important to clarify who's missing in terms of, excuse me, who participated in the assessment, whether there are shifts in enrollment, all this in some states with the [inaudible] lower grades and patterns. So anytime you have a population shift, that's just going to cloud any interpretation that you're looking at. Context matter, exploring comparisons and interaction, and I'll unpack that a little bit with respect to code, maybe attendance, any company information that you have to better understand those achieving matters. And then another principle that just really holds true in any context, but we wanted to do it in present context, always a good idea to validate, particularly if you're making high decisions, such as deployment of scarce support resources. Have some basis with assessment data, maybe you have some survey data, maybe you have qualitative information. When all of those things sum up together, you've got your strongest case to support high. So some key questions that we think should guide any thoughtful analysis plan, and here I'm drawing from a paper that my colleague, Damian Edivender, and recovery. Really think these questions of who, what, and how much, all in service to implications for supports, a good way to think about it in analysis. Nothing too complicated here. By who, we simply, what student groups, being this pact, you know, the abilities, economic. Also a good idea to look by academic grouping. That could be things such as students who were low proficient with our previous test results versus those who are at proficient or even advanced levels. So looking at that, not assuming that the impact is uniform, looking at different places in the district, always a good analogy. And certainly any natural unit, a sensible way, better understand. And then the next question is, in what areas? This could be content areas, language arts, mathematics, maybe domains for assessments. Put a caveat there, large-scale assessment subscores are notoriously unreliable, and so I would really amplify our advice about triangulating those kinds of datas, you know, corroborating it with other information, but I'd look at it. Why you're collecting five domains and that, again, if you're doing it at a high level, corroborating it for uncertainty. You can also look at various conditions, and I'm going to unpack that a little bit more. Or where are the? Three of impact is what we're getting after in the how much. Do this in a couple of different ways, shifts in percent proficient, mean scale scores. We strongly advocate for using scores. We know there's growth scores with missing data, missing large-scale assessment data 2020, but there are methods, skip year growth, that can be able to understand progress patterns. And really important to have a baseline. So all of that, we hope, is in service to what are the implications? Series, where's going to be the highest priority? How can we monitor recovery? In any cases, for no other reason, analysis in 2021 with state assessment data is going to be. Will have expressed skepticism about the value of state assessment data, and you understand cautious, in fact. And even now, talking about all these important cautions, appreciate that, but we also believe that these data can be leveraged for a useful purpose, and if nothing else, just to understand stake and responsibly [inaudible] what recovery is going to look like. That's something that might go into some level of [inaudible] to something like, something like a B-shaped recovery or a U-shaped recovery. What's that going to look like? Important to have the data that's available to. Another paper you can get on our website, and I'll just speak to very generally the topic of analysis, colleague Michelle, that leaves out some advice for an [inaudible]. Be put together, these categories. I just spoke about the baseline. That's something that honestly, states don't need to wait for 2021 to do. You can look at your legacy data. Are, I think that's going to be a real place. Some additional categories when those data first come in, in this moment now or is on the cusp of being in that position, receiving those assessment data. First thing any responsible analyst would do is some descriptors to understand what the status and crossing that with [inaudible] data. Other factors, these are just examples here, like success, learning demographics, so some initial descriptors, place to start. Then crossing that with other categories of data you have, cross tabs, tables, correlations, category of analysis. Assessment results are factors of [inaudible]. See some of those. And then the final category that cohort analysis, really looking at changes for match students across years, literally a panel matching students, third grade and fifth grade. What their achievement pattern, class of cohort analyses. I tried to just give a little more detail to this and subsequent, I promise I won't read all this to you. And if you just break this down into status and progress about analysis, suggest, Bill talked about with reporting again and again, we understand who participated, who didn't pay, all their performance on [inaudible] like in 2020, by group, by learning mode, by school district. There are, I'll just linger off this third bullet on that second row there. Wouldn't advocate this for reporting, but for special studies and analysis, maybe ways to statistically deal with pockets of data. Seeing this as a higher. Estimating from samples, have their confidence intervals to say, well, we don't know, let's say we have a school where 65% of the students participate. What's likely to have occurred? Impute data or put together a confidence interval. Again, I wouldn't advocate that for reporting. I think it can be interpreted and misused, but we think for special studies to get at a range of potential achievement, it could be. Out what achievement pattern. In terms of progress, this is the analysis, there's a couple of ways to think about this, either both or. Looking at a trend would be the same level of analysis, third grade reading across years. Growth refers cohort either [inaudible]. As I mentioned earlier, skip year growth estimates can be for that purpose. Haring growth rates pre and post, I think is very important to do, is producing, crossing that available from prior years. Some folks may be familiar, oh, he's a Harvard document that you see cited there in the test score metrics report. He talks about their trend and equity check. Happy to unpack that, whatever the hell the board is. Really about looking at any unit where they're missing data and finding a, finding the, acting for just the students that tested and looking at what the patterns are, going back into legacy data and say, what were prior rates of achievement for another group of students that have similar characteristics to get a sense for? If we don't have everybody, who do we have? And how do we know how that group compared to previous groups? Complement is what Ho calls the equity check. We say, well, let's account for the student we don't have included in the, and do the same thing. Let's find what, how those students performed in prior years, that information. Give us some clever ideas. I'm almost done, and then we're happy to open it up to any questions from the board or. We would just want to emphasize that focusing on occurred is much more important than why. In fact, I would argue that why is really going to bar. Nothing we talked about today is what I would call causal claims, so I think it's very important. This is what we've observed. Requires much stronger evidence to about why that issue that high-level analysis. We also think it's really important in both messaging and putting together analytic prospectively instead of retrospectively, consider. Prospectively instead of prospectively, consider how that, how information can be used. Form supports moving forward. In fact, one of my colleagues at the center will say, every time we talk about state assessment. Report should come out of our mouth. Should always talk about it from the standpoint of interested in this because we're interested in helping to. The state of Tennessee, interested in implication. Help us deploy some. Claiming not interested alarmist. And in being helpful at power analysis way that should provide some. Possible. I'll, I'll end with this. Website, which I mentioned earlier, we got a ton of resources pulled up in our offices during the pandemic and not traveling as much. We did a lot of writing. So you can go to our webpage and you can. Some of these reports. There's a lot more, including a lot of blogs, so they're not. Bugs and other things. States about issues related. Issues. Like information. Happy to address any questions.
Dr. Mosky and Dr. Laurey. Questions for them? Yeah, Lisa, could you? People can be recorded and people can hear outside.
Hello? Good afternoon. Okay, so that was awesome. I, I, I love this kind of information. So all of it feels very rational to me, like super measured, smart to me. Focused also on the prospective versus the retro, which I think is a very important distinction. Because, I mean, pandemic, I mean, what is there to retro on that? You know, I mean, move forward, like, and think about, I love the supports in conjunction with talking about the data and likely interventions. On your site, do you have, or can you tell us a little bit more about what that? A few samples of like what, what, what might be a prospective assessment of what's happening rather than a retro? Because no one's interested in casting blame, you know, like, or I'm not, like.
That's a great question. And I, I think the analyses that I think have the most are. Are looking at growth rates where they support that. So what rates of growth? Tennessee observed this year and carrying that growth rates. Some states to help them do just that. Think the way you would use that prospectively, as you would say. Based on what we're seeing, what kind of recovery pattern in time is it likely to observe? That might categories where you, this elevates. Students or these group of schools for priority support, or it tells us that business as usual support activities may work here, but almost certainly won't work here. And so I think what I would do is bring those kinds of analysis. So what kind of growth rates and achievement patterns you see. Really identify where magnitude is going to be most substantial to help guide work deployment.
I have a couple of questions too. First, I totally agree with what Ms. Kim was saying with regard to the perspective versus the retrospective. But what are you seeing, or maybe it's not you, maybe we're going to learn more here in the next category, but generally nationwide, I assume what you're looking at is learning loss. What, what, what have you seen nationwide?
I'll, I'll offer a few reflections. It's almost certainly going to be unsatisfactory because we're just at the cusp, and I, and I know a few things that aren't public yet, so I can't speak to that. Will, if you have anything to add, I welcome you to. You know, early on, before state assessment data were even being discussed, or before even we knew whether there'd be much participation, you probably saw some of the commercial providers went out with some studies, groups like NWA map and Renaissance. Will did some writing on this, so he may have some factors to offer. At that time, I don't. That their findings showed that there was high degree of alarm, but many of us at the center felt like those studies really. Stated very. Seen from the day. Didn't test under what. But we think that state assessment data is going to give us a much richer picture of achievement patterns. The only state I know of that, so anyway, let me just close the loop on that. So I would say, put an asterisk next to those commercial studies. I think they were preliminary in my view, didn't do a deep enough dive in. Of the set, of the data set and the conditions under which. Although some people might regard my. But with state assessment, the only state that I know has publicly released is Texas. I can't cite all of their findings from memory, but their results do show some fairly substantial. Were they, were they stronger in. And in language arts, I think.
Larger. Increase. Performance of students. Below their. Or at their lowest level. They also saw dips in both of the subject area across all, all groups. Not the same level of all, all groups had. Again, I have to put an asterisk next to that because. The particip, you have. Together with the participation rates and modifications. Texas context. And what kinds of.
Was that why, one of your early slides, you said not to use summary level data, if I read it correctly? Is that because of not having a complete? Cohort of participants as a possible?
Right, yes, right. Because they, you, and, and this. And this really was one of the problems with the interim. Test results that the interim providers, first of all, they, they were reporting results on only those schools and districts that purchased and used their products, right? But they also could not read all the student or all the schools. And so even in the comparison to, or in the claims about a drop or a difference in a drop between math. ELA, they. Really need to take that, that who's missing into account. Another question is generalizability to the entire state. And here you have that because you have a state testing program, everybody is, but not, not with the.
Just give me his more.
Think about, I, I get conceptually like, okay, avoid longitudinal graphs, perhaps, you know, because it might be misleading. You could caveat it, but people take away the wrong takeaways. Although you look like you maybe are like backing. Well, that's how I interpreted that point on the slide. So maybe I'm off on that, but I, I sort of got that, like, it can be dangerous. The, so yes, caveat it like crazy, do all those smart things. And I'm wondering though, like. Is it some? I don't know how to phrase this exactly, because that is always the easiest way is, you know, is just like when you're comparing apples to apples, of course, like, it's easy to see how you stand. When we're, when we have apples and oranges, it's very difficult. And so my basic takeaway from all this is that, okay, you have to do all these like special analyses and that's, I mean, that's it in an apples to oranges world. Yeah, that's it.
Let me, just to clarify some of the points we made, and I'll certainly jump in here if I say anything that extend or even dispute. But I, so, so first of all, I wouldn't necessarily assume, and I feel like Will made this point, that comparisons longitudinally aren't supported. Our point is simply just that do the homework to ensure that if you're going to make those kind of comparisons, if you're going to do like trend graphs and the like, that, that there's a strong basis for that. There's essentially going to be. Factors that would inhibit comparison. Be something related to changing in administration conditions. From what I understand about Tennessee, and I don't have, I don't claim to have a deep understanding, I don't think the state did anything like changing test forms or doing remote administration or anything like that. So that's not likely to be a high source. State, I may not have all the information, so if I'm wrong, somebody will correct me. So there could be, another source could be dips in participation rates, which we've talked about at length, right? So we just don't have everybody in the data file, so we can't either generalize this year or meaningly across years. But you may say, hey, we got a lot of districts and schools where we had full or almost full participation, so check, we're okay there. Our point is do the homework, check it out and make sure, because everybody's instincts naturally and defensively is going to be to be skeptical about those comparisons. So either do the scrutiny to say, we don't think the comparisons are supported, and for that reason, we're eschewing it, and we're not just doing it as a talking point. We're actually not going to do it from a department perspective. Like, we're saying, don't compare, you're not going to go to our website and see side by side graphs, like we're going to talk the talk and walk the walk. Or you can say, hey, we've done the diligence and we think comparisons are, are supported. But then all of that is distinguished from a different set of advice, which is, and that's why we separated reporting from analytics, because we think it's, a lot of states are going to be in the position, I suspect Tennessee is going to be one of them, really say, we have some concerns widespread about comparability to prior years, but we still want to get as smart as we can about it to understand achievement as deeply as we can, to do all this prospective support. And that's where you get into the stuff that technical guys like Will and I like to do, like, you know, doing some sampling or putting in some confidence intervals or understanding what the potential impact of missing data is. But my point of view here is simply, I wouldn't do that for a public reporter. I just think that's going to overwhelm folks, and I think they're unlikely to take away the points. I would do that as part of a special study that the department or partners could release with all the appropriate guidance for interpretation and use. So I said a lot, I said. Your question is so good, because those distinctions are nuanced, and I, and it can get.
So most of my questions have been asked, but I also just want to say thank you, because this is exactly the conversation I was hoping to have. I think it really gives us the right frame as we go into the data that we'll be getting back as a state here in a week or two. And so I had Lisa's question. I also sort of further have a question about growth, because I understand what you're saying now more clearly about the longitudinal kind of caveats. But particularly in a state like ours that uses EVAS or Tvos, you know, and we do that student to student comparison and we're sort of have a model that accounts for that. How would you help us think about what our growth model is going to be able to tell us and what limitations specifically Tvos might have? And then my second question, and this may tee up another trip to Nashville for you too, but the practical implications for a board like ours as we look ahead and think about assessment as related to accountability systems and sort of again, looking forward and thinking about the implications long term, what are the, the things that we need to be thinking about in terms of accountability systems? But that's a bigger question, I recognize.
Those are two excellent questions. And, and just to note, the questions aren't getting easier as we go. It's like an adaptive task, you guys are telling it. No, these, these are excellent, excellent questions, and I appreciate them both. Yeah, I, so I'm not a Tvos expert, so I don't know a lot about Tvos. But I, but I know enough about growth models in general to, to know that. There's going to be a set of assumptions that. Can be important to check in order to responsibly report. Right? What I suspect you're going to find is, there might be some conditions where you feel more comfortable putting those reports out or reducing those Tvos estimates than another again, where participations are high, where enrollment patterns are stable. And it's almost certainly going to be some areas where you feel like there's going to be some gaps and you'll need other ways to get at progress or estimate the of changes in those dimensions that, that we fucked about. So I just, I guess my only comment there is, it's almost certainly not going to be a uniform solution when it comes to academic growth. And, and I just think being clear about what the likely impact of either violating those assumptions or dealing with those missing data is going to be the most important place of emphasis for those data. But that really kind of takes us into the next question, which is right on. I mean, it's sort of the question that I think states right now, as many states are saying, all right, we're living in 21. Sort of understand where we are with assessment and accountability, but next year is where we're really starting to get weak in the knees, thinking about what. And, you know, because it's, accountability systems are built on piles of multi-year data, not just academic growth. And the need for a baseline this year. So I don't know the Tennessee accountability system deeply, but I'd be surprised if it doesn't have things that we see in other systems like banking or. Jing or these of things that. That suffer from disruptions in data. So, I mean, the, the glib expression I've been using is that a return to accountability is going to be more like a dimmer switch than a light switch. We see more of a transition phase than an all or nothing. At the center, we've had conversations with the US Department of Education about some of our recommendations. We think that states are going to like to advocate for flexibility. My, my supposition is that states will almost certainly need to classify schools for support federal categories next year, unless the US Department of Education surprises me and relaxes that. But, but I think the methods for doing that are almost certainly going to take transitional phase before they're fully restored. And, and it also may mean that those systems are characterized by more flexible ways of doing them. So. Different categories of schools and districts based on the integrity of the data for those decisions. So whereas accountability systems are typically one size fits all, they're often characterized by these composite indices. States in 22, we find themselves saying, well, we have an accountability approach that fits schools in this condition versus another that fits schools in this condition, and we've got a phased in way to get back to a place where we feel. Comparability across the board with the. Just to be sure, a lot of questions left to, to the department's credit, US department's credit. Folks I've talked to are quite aware of these challenges and are seeking input from the field to bridge that. This conversation. Talking too much, Will, sorry.
Comes out, could easily be misused. One of the challenges I think we're going to have is how do you communicate that to the person on the street? What the real meaning is, what we get from it, what we can learn from it, what we can take forward prospectively to help our students. That's the challenge. Do y'all put together a presentation like that?
One thing that occurs to me is. FAQ style. You know, presentation that has. You know, questions related to uses that. Are not supported, right? And you just say it, no, you can't use this for. Can I use these results for, you know, classifying schools into, or ranking schools based on, on their overall? And you would discourage that, you say, for the reasons why. So that's, that's one, you know, recommendation that, that occurs to me.
Sort of a platitude that people in our field speak to often. When it comes to reporting, the, the quip is, you don't want to put information out there and hope people get the right interpretation. You want to lead with the interpretation. You want to put that above the fold. And, and so if you just put numbers out there and say, be responsible, it's, it's, it's probably an impoverished theory of action that it's going to work well. But I think if, you know, you just lead with the message. And, you know, I think let that characterize all your reporting initiatives, whether we're talking about an individual student report or we're talking about a state. Media release on the, the achievement patterns in the state, I would lead with qualitative information to say, our analyses show that these are the highlights and these are the things we care about moving forward, and here's what we're going to do about it. So people aren't left to go, see a lot of numbers, what they'll take away from that.
This is Lily in Hark Grove. I do want to jump in and thank everyone for your comments and the great questions, and the presentation certainly resonates with me. And I'm thinking about it from the lens of, the State Board of Education is not, we're not typically the ones who are producing the reports, these would be coming out of the department. And so I know we have some of our partners in the room from TDOE, I don't think the commissioner was able to be with us. And so I think we need to think about through that lens and how we communicate with them and ask people like Casey Hagerin, who I believe is there today to present, what would be the game plan from the department's perspective based on this presentation and the key learnings that came from your excellent presentation? So those are the things that are resonating with me and thinking about it from that lens, because we do have many stakeholders that would be viewing this information and could quickly jump to conclusions without really truly understanding the data. If we've not, as a state, done our due diligence with the release of the information and avoiding any erroneous comparisons and the many things that you've mentioned in your presentation. So I could turn to Dr. Morrison or anybody on the board to say, you know, what do we need to do? What do we, should our steps be? And we can certainly ask Casey and others who are there from the department, what their plan is with regard to taking this back to the commissioner and having these conversations about next steps for the department before the information is released. And I'll stop talking to gauge any thoughts from you all, in particular, those from you at the Center for Assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say, folks I know from the department, Casey and the whole team, it's a first-rate department, you've got a very talented team, and I'm positive that they're on the front foot with this. Also, Will and I know many of colleagues on the Tennessee TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, my colleague Marion Perry, I think, is the chair of that TAC, it's a first-rate TAC, you've got great technical advisors. So you've got some real talent and sources of expertise already around you, so.
Yes, there's no question about that, and of course, I'm not sure if they're hearing this particular presentation for the first time. So hearing it from you for the first time ourselves as board members, of course, I wouldn't, until today, there was no way for me to know what kind of information has been shared with them. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, we do have an excellent team at the department. So we'll dig into it with the team from the department, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for informative and speaking of Casey, Rin. Our next topic is TDOE assessment updates and standards, so I think it's very appropriate.
Good afternoon, board members. I am excited to be with you today, both in person and to share some of the great things that have been happening across the state as we've wrapped up our testing season and get ready to produce some of these results and reports for you all. Of course, testing is, in our state, is a fundamental to our strategic plan. It's part of how we think about meeting this promise that we have for students, that every single student in Tennessee, regardless of where they are, will have access to a high-quality education. This is in part how we measure that and how we make sure that we are supporting each student where they are, but also the fundamental elements of our plan, how we monitor our progress as a state overall. So over the next 40 minutes or so, together, we'll talk about the impact of COVID, how that has actually changed the approach of our team at the department for the last year, the flexibilities that we gave for districts, and then what actually happened this spring as we did testing in person, and then a look ahead to the school year. We'll also do a little bit talking about the standard setting that we've done, that you will see me back tomorrow as we talk about approving the cut scores for science and social studies. I know we've already talked about that with the subcommittee of the board, so we'll just do a short review of that. So what has, what has this looked like for us in the state with COVID? We have had a lot of challenges, obviously, important timeframes in talking about our time with our students, right? We had schools that started later, we had schools that remained virtual for a majority of the year, and so we want to make sure that we're able to measure that time with our students appropriately. We have an increased need for formative and diagnostic testing. With the cancellation of spring 2020 testing, we came into this 1920 school year with a hole in some of our information in terms of what we knew about our students, and this interruption and instruction in the spring that we also wanted to understand the impacts of. So we had an increased need for some non-summitive testing that our team took on that was not something that the department has normally stepped into. We also had a large requirement for more district flexibility. Heard about us talking about one-size-fits-all versus what a local community context looks like. We know that our communities across the state of Tennessee experienced COVID in drastically different ways, how our large urban school districts reacted, how our small rural districts were experiencing that, and how that changed throughout the year. So what school looked like on the first day of school for many districts, it did not continue to look like that as the ebb and flow of the school year. And so we really needed to make sure that we were putting in place some district flexibility to make sure we were able to test as many students as possible, as safely as possible, and get the most accurate data as possible. And of course, the uncertainty and variability around our instructional calendars, our modes of instruction. Here, we run a large-scale standardized program. Large scale and standardized was not how we experienced school this year. And so we needed to make sure that those, that uncertainty and that variability around how our districts were operating, we were able to meet them where they were and make sure that we were able to. So this is our past year. Here in middle Tennessee, we obviously had a double hit last March with both the tornadoes and the beginning of the COVID pandemic. And so many of the things that we were planning on doing, our online verification tests and the start of spring testing, were impacted right away, which then has ripple effects throughout. Through last spring and summer, we did a lot of things that we don't normally do in our summative assessment team. So we halted work on 2021 assessments, and we started working on checkpoints and interims, brand-new tests that we were able to deliver to students at the very beginning of school to see where they were, measure progress, and give our educators from the very start of school something to look at to understand how to support their students in any environment. We also launched a statewide formative testing platform, which again, was first for us in the state, knowing that our educators were clamoring to have some information about how students on Tennessee-specific standards-aligned assessments, rather than something off-the-shelf, as you heard, that might not necessarily align to what we're looking at. And then we had to think through, how are we going through our testing programs that we normally would for, in reaction to what has happened in the spring? So our junior ACT testing that was canceled, for example, we had to very quickly put in place more options for fall ACT testing. We opened up a second window for WEDA, so our English learner testing in the fall as well, so we could accurately classify and support students that missed out on those assessments in the spring. And then going through a process of finishing out a RFP for our assessment development. We were very busy last summer despite tests actually not happening last year. So we launched these programs, completed ACT testing, and then did our fall OC testing, so our TCAP end-of-course testing for high school. We did fall as we normally would, but again, with the district flexibilities we offered windows for that, that we were able to support our districts. So in January, we released our information for that fall window, started our preparations for spring, and launched again new formative, including full-scale practice tests, interim tests, and new small testlets, that we were able to give educators some additional information so they know where their students are in advance of that final summative testing. And then we also saw the special session with our General Assembly and what that, they were asking us to look at as a department and as a state in terms of supporting our students. So this spring, we were able to test in a, as relatively normal as we could, that include our English learner testing, MSAA and alternate testing for our students with cognitive disabilities, ACT testing, and of course, our TCAP summative testing. We also, with the passage of the learning loss legislation, supported districts as they started their summer, bridge camps, summer learning acceleration camps. The department actually created and released post-test for those camps as well. So if you look at the suite of things that our team is doing, besides just summative testing right now, we've really expanded that portfolio of more testing options for districts to get as much information about their students. And so where we are right now is wrapping up that summer, students, our last summer programs across the state end next week. We're developing additional formative work for next year and getting ready to do our final reporting for our TCAP results. So I mentioned our formative supports. This is something we, I spoke to the board about the last time we were together, but we've actually added even more since then. So our start-of-year checkpoints from last year was focused on math and ELA, and this is across all tested grades, so from third grade all the way through high school, giving our educators an opportunity to, even though they didn't have those spring 2020 test results, they could very quickly gauge where their incoming students were, what standards they may be missing out on, and be able to use a very on-demand acceleration model to say, okay, if this is a piece of information that they may be missing for me to start grade-level content, we really wanted students to be in grade-level content and not in a remedial loop. And so those checkpoints were able to give us on-demand acceleration for those students to identify what they needed. We released mock interims, so again, these are full blueprint-aligned, full-length tests that are aligned to TCAP. Our previous practice test had been not 100% in terms of what that alignment looked like. So this gives our students a real practice that's in a non-high-stakes environment, gives our educators real data they can use that are real TCAP items and that are aligned to Tennessee standards. So not an off-the-shelf, something that's not going to match the rigor of our assessments and our items, but that match. And open an item bank, so educators can actually use former TCAP items to design tests themselves that they can use in their... And then this summer, launched the pre- and post-test for our summer programs as well. And so right now, we have over 700,000 students that are provisioned today in our formative platform, which is SchoolNet. And then, and as of last week, when we were preparing this presentation, over 360,000 formative tests had been taken in that platform in less than a year. So a lot of good information that districts are gaining. So when we're preparing for summative, heard my colleagues from the Center of Assessment talking about what are some of the changes that states did to make sure that they were able to test this year? For us, we focused on getting as many students to test as possible. Wanted to make sure that we were able to support districts to do that safely, so we asked what they needed and then worked very closely with them one-on-one to do that. We expanded the available use of off-site testing locations and the flexibility of testing schedules and training proctors and support folks. We issued guidance on use of medical exemptions for COVID-impacted students, including legal guidance to support districts, who, these were new conversations and new decisions for them. We provided peer support and profiles from districts from the field who were doing things differently or doing things right. We were connecting peers across district lines to support, because there is only one district testing coordinator in every district. They're doing this on their own, and we wanted to connect the dots to make sure we were reporting folks. And you also heard one of the things that many states did was expand the testing window. One, this prevents students from being impacted by a quarantine or a COVID diagnosis. If, you know, a two-week quarantine would take up the majority of our current testing window. And so expanding that, giving flexibility for makeup exams for districts, but also wanting to recognize that all of our districts did not start school on the same day. We saw months difference, weeks difference in terms of a district to district, how many instructional days that they were going to have prior to our testing window. We wanted that to be as comparable as possible, and so we provided different testing windows that aligned to those instructional calendars to support districts from where they were coming in. We also expanded our testing opportunities for WEDA and our alternate assessments as well as ACT. And I know it's not necessarily what I'll be talking about here today, but I'm incredibly proud of the ACT push, despite the legislature removing the requirement for last year for our juniors to take the ACT. We are actually one of the largest states in the nation in ACT testing during, not as a percentage of students, like, as in numbers of tests taken. And for a state with a population like Tennessee, phenomenal, and it's the amount of options that we worked with our team at ACT to give to districts, and also how hard districts work to get students in. We allowed student makeups across windows, so despite the choice of window, we wanted to give flexibility for individual kids and provided a lot of different types of support, virtual trainings, virtual meetings, daily webinars. We had a daily webinar throughout an entire nine-and-a-half-week window. So my team was very tired at the end of that, but they were also made sure that every single day, whatever question a district had, that we were there, and increasing our officials. We issued new guidance documents this year, sample communications kits, checklists, social media tools. And this was really in support of our districts who were coming on and had never used some of these tools before because they didn't have to. Assessment is expected, students are expected to show up. This year is a very different year, particularly with our districts who had a majority of their students at home in virtual education. Communicating with those families, the value of bringing a student to the building to test was a very different conversation than we've had in past years, and we wanted to make sure that we were supporting having those come. So what happened? What did it look like? These are a few numbers that y'all can look at, and these are the numbers on our dashboard that we review every single day. Over 600,000 essays scored by hand. So we had hundreds, over 300 hand scorers that were very quickly grading those constructed response essays for our students to be able to score their exams. Nearly 2 million answer documents this spring, run-through scanning machines to scan. What does that look like for our UPS and FedEx partners? That means tens of thousands of boxes across the state to fulfill orders for our districts, and nearly 2 million tests taken this spring alone. And despite the flexibilities that we provided to districts, our unanimous tip line that is there to support in case there are test security and concerns, had zero calls. So even though we had that longer window, even though we had more flexibilities, we really do not have any concerns at this point about the quality of the administration and test security that we were able to... About that. And that is, that is, all of that is in service to our district testing coordinators, our building testing coordinators, and our district leaders, who just did a phenomenal job of setting up testing this spring in order for students safely, for families to feel like that they had their questions answered. I'm really, really happy to stand up here and sing the praises of our district testing coordinators, because they did a phenomenal job. Districts took advantage of every single flexibility they offered. So whether that was off-site testing and districts saying, hey, can I, I want to test in my local church, local community center, I want to test my virtual students at a different building than my in-person learners, I want to be able to provide makeup opportunities at a different testing window, they took advantage of that in a way that they needed to. They increased communications with parents. In fact, many districts set participation rate goals and very publicly did that in a way that challenged themselves, challenged their families, whether it was to sign a pledge to show up or to be a part of what was happening in a school building. Which leads me to my next point, which is there was a lot of positivity and joy and celebrations around testing. I monitor social media every single day when we're in a testing window for test security concerns, et cetera, and what I saw was a lot of joy. There were kids that had not met their teachers, meeting them for the first time. There were kids stepping foot in a new building, whether that was their transition to middle school or high school, stepping foot in that building for the first time, that were able to see their friends that they hadn't seen in... They were able to see their friends that they hadn't seen in, and to celebrate the great participation that we were seeing at school to school and the joy of these teachers and students being able to be together again was not normally what I see on social media around them. So it was very exciting to watch. And I will say, our administration vendor has been incredibly flexible and accommodating with us. So, you know, our contract does not say we will do four testing windows and four different sets of reports, but that's what we were able to accomplish. And so they were incredibly accommodating of every single thing that we asked, whether that's wave shipments processing, the expanded hand scoring timeline, which means they were staffing very differently than they normally do, and a much earlier delivery of raw scores this year to support getting students into these summer programs to support the learning loss and acceleration. So we were able to deliver raw scores within two weeks of the close of every single window to make sure districts had initial information to prioritize students for those summer supports. But it wasn't always rosy, obviously. We did have a significant number of students across the state who were in virtual instruction, which means they were not walking into a school building every day. And that's what we were asking them to do to test, was to walk into a school building. So testing students in virtual instruction was a challenge for our districts to figure out how to communicate that with families, how to ensure safety of these students, and then how to make sure that they were communicating effectively when they weren't seeing people. We also had significant impacts on staffing. COVID-related quarantines, sicknesses. And for a lot of schools and districts that had policies around no volunteers entering the building, proctoring looked very different this year. Administration looked very different this year for many of them. We also had shipping challenges. You know, now that everyone's home and Amazon, we're seeing a lot of, a lot more logistics coming through and shipping. And so we definitely had to work very closely with our partners to mitigate challenges that we saw in shipping delays. And they were impacted by, you know, COVID sickness and quarantine. And then increased materials orders. So this year, if you're thinking about small groups, read aloud accommodations, et cetera, we saw an increase in that as districts were social distancing their testing rooms, spreading out students. And so that required increase in orders that we did not. And we learned a lot about offering four windows and doing a wave approach to scoring and reporting. It was, we learned a lot about logistics that we are taking into ensure improvements in logistics, even if we don't do the multiple windows in the past. So a lot of good lessons learned and a lot of impressive flexibilities, both by our districts and by our vendor. So what is expected for the year ahead? We will continue to increase our formative options. I really liked that the Center for Assessment team talked about supports because that's where we will be and where we will continue. We're adding to that item bank, we're adding to our suite of testlets. We are continuing to provide the pre-and post-test for our summer programs, which again, all of these are tests in addition to our summer information. And I assure you, the consistency and quality of our summative testing program will remain, both for our fall EOC, our spring T cap next year. And we are continuing to push our vendor for faster and faster reporting of scores to support the important decisions. And we recently announced a transition back to online administration for our high schools for next year. So our high school EOCs will be back to computer-based test for the 2122 school year. We'll continue to monitor what that looks like for other grades and subjects for the. So I will say, the team asked about, well, when will we be getting some of these scores? How are we thinking about score reporting? You don't see a lot of actual results in this presentation is because we are doing quality checks on our comprehensive data files as we speak. That's what our psychometric team is doing back at the office right now, the forecourt office. We are anticipating releasing participation rate data first. As you have heard, is a best practice, recommended practice across the country. So next week, please expect to see the comprehensive participation rate data for the state and district-by-district analysis. And then the following week, expect to see our T cap results data as we dig in and set some updates about what that looks like. And I can assure you that our team has been looking at documents from the center, been looking at documents and working with our CCSO collaboratives. The Andrew Ho paper that was used, I've spoken to Andrew multiple times about conducting these analyses and looking at not only who is in our data and what is our data saying, but who's missing? How can we estimate the impact and do that equity check? And then also think, what comparisons and longitudinal looks can we support? Because we feel confident in what we're seeing, and then what do we not want to encourage folks to support? So we will be releasing that data embargoed to our districts this week. Having some conversation with media as we prepare to release these two large releases in the next. So you will also see me again tomorrow to present our Tennessee Educator Committee's recommendations on cut scores for our new science and social studies exams. So this standard-setting overview is a conversation that I had with our subcommittee on testing and accountability earlier this year. I did want to do a brief overview here prior to you row, in case you had any questions. You want to stop now?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for going through that. I'm afraid a lot of my questions are probably ones where you'll say that, no, wait until next week and following week. So that said, I mean, just are the kinds of things that we'll see when the participation rates are released? You know, how many ELAs in schools met 85% participation rate, for example? The percent of overall potential test takers versus actual test takers, all of that broken down by demographics? That's when you talk about participation rate reporting.
Yeah, absolutely. So according to the Accountability Hold Harmless Bill that was passed in special session, all negative impacts of accountability will not be there for districts who met an 80% participation threshold. So we will be releasing what percentage of districts met that threshold and the full list of districts and their participation. So that will come next week. We will also be talking about from a state level, what that overall participation rate looked like, demographic representation of that, and then how representative that was of.
And then again, I really appreciated Chris and Will kind of setting the framework for how we think about the data. It sounds like you all are really thinking about how we report it responsibly. And I know this board will be eager to have conversations with you and your team. And maybe we'll think about September special call meeting or some next opportunity. We'll just think our next quarterly meeting's not till the end of October, which seems forever away right now. So yeah, I think most of my questions will probably need, but thank you for this update in terms of what we can expect when.
Other questions? Ms. Daryl.
So that's a term that we did not coin, but that was coined by Dr. Andrew Ho, that is really thinking about how, what do we understand about the students who took our exam? What do we understand about the students who might not have taken the exam? So there's two places to check there. One is thinking about enrollment. How did enrollment change? Because we can share a participation rate for this year, but if enrollment has significant, actually is different if you think about a longitudinal. So enrollment is one piece, and for the students that were enrolled, that were registered to take the, what percentage of? And so in an understanding of that gap of who's not here, we want to understand if that missing is not random? If there is a certain group of students who are more likely to be missing than not? And then how did we expect those students would have performed had they taken the test? And does that potential performance, that projected performance, would that have changed in a way that changes? So that's something to think about. We don't want to tell a story that is incomplete because a group of students is.
Question. So you're going to report the data next week in, pardon, participation rates. One question I've gotten from districts is when are they going to get the data? Second question is, when you report the data, how are you using the information presented from Center for Assessments reporting that data?
Yeah, absolutely. So our districts received raw scores in four different waves. And so all of our districts have raw scores now that came right after their administration window. Our comprehensive data file, which is the full data file that includes raw scores and scaled scores, so the scales, the final score and the performance level, is actually due to be shared to districts tomorrow with, and after this board votes on final cut scores. So if those cut scores are approved, we'll be able to share the full suite of our data from the spring with districts. And then, following from there, we'll have about a week and then we'll be releasing aggregate and reporting to districts. So our summary reports on their schools and districts. And then, at the end of next week, we'll be releasing information into our family portal. So families and teachers can log in, see that data themselves. Printed information, printed student reports will be in the first couple of weeks of August delivered to school. But schools will get their comprehensive data file hopefully tomorrow.
So the appropriate caveats that Center for Assessments talked about, will they get those at the time that that data becomes public to the families, et cetera? Or are they just going to get results?
Yeah, so I think it's important that districts get the full suite of results, right? Because they need to digest and understand in terms of their context. We will be putting out publicly participation rates from a statewide perspective next week and the following week, publicly a statewide summary of results. We will include in that summary of results, a lot of the information that's shared here, the context and caveats. And that was a decision too, about releasing participation rates in advance, was to help set that context. But yes, we will be supporting districts receiving that results with some additional information about what they're seeing, some tools around looking at that data and asking some of these same questions themselves that the center has proposed to us today.
And one other question, when you report the data, will they be able to report those that were virtual class and those that were in class? Will we see separate data in that way?
So not in our assessment results because that data is not at our assessment vendor. That is information that we are looking at at this stage. But attendance data and the type of class that a student is in, this is actually new information that we have not required from districts in advance of this year. So we had a new attendance code, we're asking for that information from districts. So we are looking at that information now. We will be using it in analysis and under results. But that's new information that districts have shared this year. That's a new way for us to be, but it will not be part of the first public release.
I understand last year, obviously, was unique from a standpoint of virtual classes. But as we, as the board looks at potential for virtual programs, virtual classes, I think that would be something that would be of value and sure to understand how people in the virtual classes compare to them.
Absolutely. That was the first question that the committee asked me as well in the fall. Casey, will we be able to do this? So it's definitely a question that we're looking at internally.
Other questions? Ms. Kim.
That presentation, that was very helpful. Can you remind me what the timeline is around the ACT?
For results or for? Yeah, so we will receive our statewide results this fall in terms of the past cohort. We typically do a release in the fall and then another release in the spring of cohort results. Because we do the senior break, we typically don't release a graduation cohorts ACT release until that seniority.
Okay, but thank you. And then, this is totally, the testlets, two questions. Can you remind me what's in the, like, where the content for the testlets come from?
Yeah, so we're actually building those. These are very similar to T cap items questions, but they are much smaller tests. So they're five-question tests, 10-question tests that are able to give a teacher a weekly end or unit end check for her students. Those are actually based on Tennessee state standards. We actually focus in on one or two standard A testlet. So they're meant to be really customizable for an educator as they're finishing a unit, as they're finishing a lesson, that they're able to go in and targetedly assess those students.
Then I think that that answers my question, because the question, I always, I thought the more testlets for, it made me wonder how big they are. It sort of, you know, and is there?
Be looking at.
You're looking at that, okay, yep.
We have, so we've only, we released 11 in the spring. That was our very first group that has come out. So we did math and ELA in one grade of science. We have 50-something more coming this year across different subject areas. So we'll be able to plug in.
For this part?
So standard setting. Tomorrow, you will be receiving recommended cut scores for our science and social studies exam. For those of you who don't live and breathe a large-scale summative assessment program, like my friends from the center, this is actually the life cycle of a T cap test. It's actually three years long from when we first decide on what our standards are and that this board does that, accepts our Tennessee academic standards. How do we build a test that then is administered to students? We build specifications and an overview or what we call a blueprint of that test. We then develop individual questions that are aligned to our standards. We test those questions first, see if those questions are actually measuring the thing we measure and that students perform on that question equally across the board, that no student is disadvantaged by any specific question. We then review the data from that, build an operational test, which is the real test that a student will be scored on, and give that test to students. And the last step is we actually have to standard set, which means we look at that test that we built. We align it to the expectations of the standards. Say, what do we believe the scores are that are appropriate to label a student into a proficiency band or a performance level based on this specific exam that we're working on? And then after we set those cut scores, then we can actually report scores to the field. So the standard-setting process is a methodology used to define those levels of achievement. So how a student is described in their results for the test. And we have to set cut scores in order to break up those performance levels. And a cut score is simply the score that serves to differentiate students into those different levels. So what does that look like in the state of Tennessee? We take the student expectations, that is the standards. What a student is supposed to know and be able to do according to what this board has set. Take the actual test itself, the questions that we asked, how students responded to those questions. And then we take Tennessee teachers with real content expertise and have them evaluate those two things together to help us cut, set these cut scores through a standard-setting process. In the state of Tennessee, our performance levels are, as you see on the screen, mastered, on track, approaching, and below, with on track and mastered being our proficiency. So in that continuum of performance, the cut scores represent where a student will be and how they will, which performance level they will be. That those cut scores are on the edges of each of these performance base in that continuum of performance from. So why are you seeing me today in July 2021 to do standard setting? Our revised science and social studies exams were in place and very well timed in 2019, 2020, which require standard setting to determine. We revised our science standards back in 2016. Those were implemented in 2018. We did a field test year where we were testing out new questions to design the new. We did a field test year where we were testing out new questions to design the new standard, the new science test, which means we had a beautiful new science test ready to go in 1920 when assessments were canceled. We did a very similar thing with our social studies as well. This board reviewed and revised those standards in 2019 and the test in 2019 was adapted to remove a constructed response item and also aligned to the. So what did our standard setting process looked like? Again, I did a much more in-depth conversation with the subcommittee on this, but I did want to send this to everyone and get questions for. Originally, these meetings were scheduled to happen in summer 2020 with Tennessee educators. Obviously, we had to cancel those meetings because of the COVID pandemic and because the, we decided to cancel. So what we did was we conducted a two-part process for our standard setting this year. We did a content-based standard set in November and conducted those meetings virtually. So we brought together teams of teachers and a virtual platform. And this included teachers from across Tennessee, a diversity of background, years of experience and types of school districts that they represented. We reviewed the fall and spring assessment questions in comparison to our state standards and also in comparison to those performance level descriptors, the what we believe to be true for a student who is in one of those performance bases. Utilized a well-known methodology called Angoff method, which is a method by which the teachers review each and every question in comparison to the standards and also to those performance level descriptors. Say, is a student who is falling in this bucket of performance, would that student likely get this question right? And injecting multiple rounds of judgments on those questions until they come to a full committee thing of what those cut scores needs. We then came back and reconvened a subset of those teachers this spring following the testing to make sure that they were actually looking at those cut scores a second time, that we were looking to understand what vertical articulation looked like across the grades, which means we did, we wanted those performance to represent the same thing grade to grade and that there wasn't different expectations on our standards for different grade levels of students. We also convened a group of teachers to talk about our science alternate exam. So this is our exam that is given to our students with the most significant cognitive abilities. And because those students experience our assessment slightly differently, we wanted to make sure that we were presenting not just the content for those educators to review, but also what we called student profiles, which is actual, an actual understanding of how a student could get to each cut score by how they answered the questions. Because our students were, potentially get to different levels of cut scores by answering different questions correctly and that our students, our educators are thinking really critically, not just about the content, but also about this special population of. And so in creating those student profiles, we had to have real student data to look at. And so hence, those meetings happened just the past couple of weeks in July after testing, but before I'm standing in front of you. And so we will be bringing those recommended cut scores that came from those teacher committees to you tomorrow. Happy to answer any questions about that process or what you'll see tomorrow.
Process. See that's trying to identify. How? Going about it? What are they, target numbers they're looking for or whatever they. What are they doing?
So we don't actually walk in with a target number for them. We actually generate that with the facilitation of that group. The first thing they do when they walk in is a really deep dive of our performance level. And so the performance level descriptors of what does it mean to be mastered in the state of Tennessee? Well, that means you have this amount of content knowledge in this.
And who has decided that?
Yeah.
Who?
Great question. So if we back up, we take those policy level, performance level descriptors that are the same across all subject areas and grade levels, right? What it means to be mastered in the state of Tennessee. We have a sentence, right, that represents every grade level and subject area. We actually bring a group of teachers together to say, let's look at what this sentence could mean for a seventh grade science, right? And create performance level descriptors for each grade and subject area for each standard. So they're actually looking at our standards and they're saying, what would this performance on this standard look like at a mastered level, at an on-track level? If you were just below the standard, what could you do? And if you were not even approaching the standard, what could you potentially do? So they actually write those performance level descriptors and Tennessee teachers write those for each grade and subject area. That's one committee. Come back later with another committee and say, let's do a deep dive of those descriptions, right? So in seventh grade science, what a student who is on track should be able to do and what they should be able to know. And then they write borderline performance level descriptor, which means for a student who is just over the edge of the on-track cut or just over the edge of the mastered cut, what does their performance look different than a student who is just under that cut? And they write those borderline descriptors. So we're getting incredibly descriptive narratives about what a student should be able to do, what questions they should be able to get right at every level of performance from the bottom to the. And we actually go through and look at real test questions. We say, okay, you said a seventh grade student who is on track in science should be able to differentiate these two concepts. Here's a test question where they're able to do that. What percentage of kids do you think will get this right? And if a student got this right, do you think they should be in this box? So they go through a round of judgments where they're actually answering a question, yes or no? Would a student who's on the borderline of on track get this question right? Yes or no? And so then they add that up and they say, well, for an on-track student, I answered yes 27 times, which means for me, Casey thinks the cut score for performance for on-track is 27. What does Mike think? And then we facilitate a conversation where we're going question by question determining that. And we do three rounds of that until the entire committee comes together to agree on what those cuts are for each.
All right, so, thank you. If you, once the work is done, would they? Would they step back and they look at their. They say, if I wanted to look, see if this person. Go to the next level, therefore we have confirmed, validated our previous.
Absolutely. So your check's in the mail in terms of teeing me up for the next question, which is the last day of these standard setting meetings or called vertical articulation, in which all of the grade level committees get together and they look at how that cut score looks in each of the different grades. They ask themselves, would a student in this grade be ready to hit this level of performance in the next grade? Or are there discrepancies across grade, right? Are we expecting way more out of our seventh graders than we're expecting out of all of our other grade? So the final piece of this puzzle, which is one of the things that just happened in July, is we're actually looking at vertical articulation of those cuts across grades and thinking about the continuum of our assessment and the continuum of statistics. And then also, one of the things that we did was look at actual student performance on some of those questions, to gut check if our committees' understanding and guess about the percentage of students that guess or not get these questions right or wrong to gut check those assumptions. And so in that last day of vertical articulation, there are a few tweaks, right, to the cut score recommendations of the committees to make sure that they are in alignment grade to grade and that the assumptions that they made on the content were reasonable and were defensible.
I'm going to follow up because I will admit that what I struggle with when you go through your three-year process, determine the standards. Blueprints and development in the review. Expect, I would expect that if a person mastered, they would know all this stuff. That's not the case. What you're saying is, is that the person who masters has sufficient knowledge to move forward to the next subject.
That's totally right.
That is, that's a, I hope, that's something, a revelation that I had not realized before. So that when the cut score comes back, it's 70%, something like that, total score.
That's right.
And you're saying they mastered it. I kept on saying, the score is 70, the score is 60, and they've mastered it. But now with your explanation, it helps me understand.
So the definition for mastered in Tennessee is that students are, have an extensive understanding and an expert ability to apply grade or course level knowledge and are prepared to move to the next grade level in Tennessee academia, right? So it's not necessarily that they can do every single thing, right? But that they have shown a broad understanding of the content, ready to engage.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ren. It's very, very helpful.
So we will see you tomorrow to review those cut scores for science, social studies, and alternate.
Very good. I think it's now time to take a break. And we hold it to 10 minutes. I'll be back here at seven minutes till. School counseling standards. Ms. Ward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm so sorry. This is a result of me forgetting to make a couple of reminders at the start of our workshop, so forgive me, two minutes. For members who are with us or at Lillian Online, we have a doodle poll that's out and just want to make sure everybody's reminded, part of it's for the fall retreat, part of it's for our special call meeting that I referenced earlier that we're targeting for September. So just a quick reminder, if you haven't taken that poll, please do so we can get those dates nailed down. And then secondly, we've got a couple of new team members, some of which have actually started, some of which are gracious enough to be with us even though they have not officially started, and they're all part of our growing legal team. So Angie's going to introduce the folks that are with us today.
Thank you, Angie, and welcome. We look forward to working with you. Okay, Ms. Ward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Denisha Ward. I am the coordinator of college and career advising for the department. I will be presenting on school counseling. As always, we like to stay grounded in our best for all strategic plan, and school counseling falls within the student readiness part of that strategic. So our agenda today is just a quick introduction to my role and responsibilities at the department, a overview of school counseling across the state. I'll be talking about our school council advisory council that's created as of this year, and then the school council regional tables that will be implemented. So as I say, my name is Denisha. I'm the coordinator of college and career advising, and that role belongs to the Division of College, Career, and Technical Education with the department. Some of my key initiatives are career awareness, exploration, advising, and I really focus in on that advising space, thinking about grades 12. I work very closely with another colleague of mine, Liza Ambrose, who is the program manager of career, really focuses in on career. A seamless transition and vertical line across all K through 12 as we think about career development first. ACT prep for students and educators, so in collaboration with the department is offering ACT prep for students as well as free on professional development for educators, want to gain some strategies and research as to how to integrate ACT. I also am focused on school council professional development, which I'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation, as well as the K through 12 school counseling standards, policy, and life. And I also collaborate with a few of our statewide advising programs such as T E A. I work really closely with T E A, well, and T B R. I am a former high school counselor, so that's why I love to advocate for my school. I was a college counselor as well at a charter school in Memphis, Tennessee for a few years, as well as working in a community setting. I am a school counselor by trade, so I got my master's degree in school counseling from the University of Memphis, and I'm currently on top. So looking at school counseling across the state, as we really think about the implementation of school standards, overall, as you're able to interact with many of our school counselors in different areas across the state, school counselors are really able to submit the school and spend 80% of their time in direct service. When I say direct service, I mean really providing individual or group counseling to students. However, there are some districts that are still requiring counselors to engage in some facilities that are outside of the realm of, one of those being testing coordination, one of the largest ones that we have still an issue with, school counselors having to... There are also school counselors who have to engage in substitute teachers for data entry, record keeping, which are a part of... Some of the recommendations that I hear from our school counselors on the ground is to make sure that our school leaders and district leaders are aware of the role of our counselors, ensure that our school counselors are aware of the resources that they have right there in their school, its school counselors. We're not only, you know, scheduling gurus and transcript reviewers, but we can also provide counseling services to our students right there in our schools. Making sure that our administrators are aware of school counseling. So we know what we're to do, we know what our job and our responsibilities are, but our school administrators also need to know so that they can know what we are supposed to do and what we are not. Four-year plans, the implementation and use of these. So four-year plans, just to give a brief overview of what they are, they are course planning tools that we use, students are thinking about the courses that they will take from... So four-year plans are being completed in eighth grade by most of our districts and are updated either twice per year until the student enters 12th grade. The actual use of these plans is minimal, though. Student advising is not as in-depth as counselors would like for it to be, and the barrier for that is that it is definitely difficult to meet individually if the students assigned to one school counselor. Would like to, and I know school counselors would like to be able to do that and provide in-depth student academic advisement, but that's just not able to have so many that you have to, these steps, as well as look after other responsibilities that counselors are charged with. Some of the recommendations for the field related to this particular issue is to start earlier, thinking about building students' college base for course advisement, sixth and seventh grade, and not just starting in eighth grade. And then also, you know, asking our teachers and our other faculty members also engage in conversations regarding course planning and... You know, school counselors can't do that role solely alone, and teachers are also a trusted adult within the school building that can provide academic... So counselor preparation, so once counselors are into schools and they are in service, many of our larger districts are able to provide school counselor professional development that is counselor-specific and content-specific throughout the year. However, some of our smaller districts are able to provide their school counselor specific PD, as they may not have like a school counseling supervisor or supervisor that has actually been a school that is needed. Some of the recommendations from the field, more so related to the E P P standards here, in having conversations with some of our counselor educators or our faculty members from some of our institutions that teach school counselors, to say that the E P P do need updating. Our current standards only require that programs are allowed, aligned with the American School Counsel Association or K C R E P standards. And K C R E P is the accrediting body for all graduate counseling programs. ASCA, though, has a standard called the School Counsel Preparation Standard that are not only the counselor competence, but also include, which is a framework for the delivery of a school counseling program, the ethical standards that school counselors should adhere into, and mindset and behaviors, which is basically a lesson plan or a curriculum of what we want students to, and what we want them to take with them into the next grade from K through 12. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit and talk about some of the initiatives that we have from T D O E that are for school counselors. So first, before I get into this, I just want to talk about the collaboration that we support. So as I said, I belong to C C, but student and family support is also a division that is within student readiness. And so we recognize that the school counselor's role is not just focused on academic development and college and career readiness, but it's also providing support to students socially and emotionally. The coordinator of college and career advising, I also collaborate, Christie Steele, Director of Mental Health in the Student and Family Supports Division, to ensure that all of the domains of the school counseling model. The Director of Mental Health assists in the school council advisory council, as well as our professional development trainings that we will be... So our school counselor advisory council, we started this in, this summer, we had our first meeting. So we have school counselors from each of our economic and community development regions represented on our advisory. We have school counselors from each level, K through 12. We also have faculty from some of our Tennessee... So on the slide here, you can see some of the things that the council members will be engaged in through their service year. So we want to gain feedback from our council members on the school counseling standards. We really want to ensure that, you know, if these need to be updated, we want to get feedback from our school officers that are on the ground doing the work, our college and career models, and the career exploration course standards. All of these are really looking at if these need to be updated, and if so, what does that look like? Engagement with other agencies, divisions, and offices. So school counseling touches all of these different agencies, and this is not an exhaustive list, but we want to make sure that we make that connection between student and family supports and school counseling, Department of Labor and school counseling, mental health, C C, family resource centers, coordinated school health, to name it. The school council advisory council members will also be asked to present at our regional professional development trainings that we'll be having in the fall, starting in the fall. They will be asked to present on a topic of their choice, or whether that be virtual school, multi-tier systems of support, they will be asked that information, all of our school. So as I said, our school council regional roundtables, and this is not a new concept. In the past, these were called school council collaboratives, but these are going to be regional trainings that we will hold every core region across the state, and some of the topics are listed there. They include student support, career exploration, and compromising. And before we decided to implement any topics, we did a needs assessment with our school counselors to see whatever we presented was relevant to what their needs were. Some of the other trainings available to school counselors are available on the Best for All Central site, and they're listed there below, supporting students who experience trauma. Everyone plays a role in this shifting, they're all available now. That's what I have for you to say, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.
Questions for Ms. Ward. Ms. Daryl.
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. Really, really enjoyed that, and I was fortunate a couple of years ago to have a Zoom with about three or four counselors from across the state that I had requested, actually, from T E A, and it was very illuminating. One question I have is about the service delivery model that school counselors are asked to execute. And is it realistic that we expect one individual to serve all of these roles? Have you had, have you and your counselor had any discussion about advocating for a team approach where maybe the school counselor takes a step back and is more of an administrator or player coach, where you have different roles within a school to service all of those various areas that you mentioned?
That's not a conversation that we've had, you know, we just started our council back, but that's definitely something that we want to talk about. Current school counselor ratios are very, still very high. One to 350 is still quite a large amount of person. But I do think that, you know, using other referral services, which we do in our role at school counselors, we play every role. So we have to refer out to that school psychologist, that school social worker. But at the same time, that means that that district has to have those roles available for us to be able to do. So that's something that we definitely want to advocate for, as well as, you know, thinking more about that school counselor...
One additional point. Thank you for your answer. I first joined the board, one of our joint meetings with T H E C, Prior Commissioner McQueen, shared with us that across the state, there were some inordinate percentage of students who were, who demonstrated competency and ability for dual enrollment who weren't guided in that direction, and that those students were missing out on that opportunity, and the overwhelming majority of them were students of color. And so as we think about this division of time and roles and responsibilities, that thought sort of runs in the back of my mind that students are, I won't use the word suffering, but missing out on game-changing opportunity for their futures as a result of this model that we're operating under that may be somewhat antiquated, so.
No, and I agree. Thankfully, in my experiences, I've been designated as a dual enrollment coordinator in my class experiences as high school counselor, right? But I know that that doesn't happen across the board. I think it could be, again, that ratio, a lot of students, not enough time. But then I think, again, it also could be biased there, some things that we need to professional develop, I'm thinking about, are we really targeting every that we could be for these opportunities?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Ed.
Thank you. So I remember when we voted on the 80 when we voted on the 80/20. But time I'm trying to remember. Herman. What that one?
So the School Counsel Association case for one.
What would be typical ratio?
So right now, elementary is 500. And then high, school, high school. Is that across the board and could there be one to 900?
Alright, so I also remember added a responsibility at the time. I think there was really a robust career. Assume it was like, really want to be a engineer, you better really be working on your back in eighth grade. Or if you want to be whatever, here's your path to do it, so you're not waiting. Extremely important to what we're. There were other things that were very responsibilities, I don't know if truancy was in. But I understand that it's something that principals often end to the council. Try to be handled. I'm going around the bar in a long way. I didn't have personally a lot of confidence that 20% with fidelity and think that feared at the time that there's principal and I can understand it has so few assets available to do things, including I think test administration was a big deal. And yet these things have to happen. If we're going to ever achieve what we've been talking about getting, they it's the principal's fault, but he does need to comply or she, they need to comply with if this is a policy or thing that I've considered at the time. Some point may want to go back and read that. Is because there is no, no consequence really reaching that. So, you know, it's sort of like a guidance, sort of a if a counselor was required to keep anyone would know that time sheet exists. Hard copy there somewhere, it's more mindful of that. All that being said, counselors are way underfunded, like school nurses. Way underfunded, they're not there. So these kids aren't getting the value of early intervention help. Particularly how what to do once again.
Can I, can I say amen to that? Couple of points on that, so Chairwoman Hartgrove is the chair of the BEP recommendation committee, also served on as well as the Senate Education Committee Chairs. Directors, member of the school board. Ben Torres, attorney from SBA. Each year, we, we go through a prioritization process, send about five, last year, we actually sent six because we added the whole harmless recommendations to Assembly on things. Every year that I've been on there, counselors and nurses are two, I think they survey just went out. Suspect that when it comes back, counselors and nurses are right there near the top of the list. Recommended because of that number one to 350 or 500 or not. We want counselors to counseling, that's what the students need. So that recommendation will go to the Assembly probably, if that's what the recommendation committee is. And turn it over to Mr. James there in just a second. Encourage people to contact their legislator and let them know that they think it's an important aspect funded at the level. Also, I do know that we go through the process. Commission is very interested in these four-year plans. Education Recovery Innovation Committee is, the importance of setting those four-year plans and you're saying start out earlier and I so I'm going to ask Mr. James to talk about both of those, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. And it's true, the Education Recovery Innovation Commission we, for two solid days, actually just last week. This was one of the topics, certainly folks from all walks of life and so on are very interested in the paid to career process, how do you, how do you winnow down those responsibilities, those interests and put them on pathway to success with bureaucratic steps getting in the way? And these members are talking about what's already here, you know? And then we see, but in reality, they're not used that much. So I, I will tell you, you know, what Mr. Ebby said is entirely accurate. And this was the first year, by the way, that I saw every one of the BEP review committee's recommendations at least be introduced as a bill. And the way it read out of last year's video, it went through, it says, "As the role and scope and responsibilities of school counselors has expanded in recent years, members of this review committee have reported strong stakeholder interest in decreasing the current ratio of students to school counselors. School counselors utilize identified professional competencies to create comprehensive school counseling programs, focus on students' outcomes, teach key competencies and help students navigate these paths towards post-secondary success. The formula currently provides for school counselors at an average of one to five, six, one to 350 for seven through twelve. And the BEP review committee therefore recommends that additional funds be allocated within the formula to bring Tennessee's counselor to student ratio in closer alignment with national best practices." That was judged to be $64,521,000 as of last year. Issues were brought down to 250. So on that issue, I'd say you've got a lot.
Vice Chairman Ebby, I do want to add to the conversation and I have to tell you all, it's a bit difficult when you're remote. A lot of the conversation at my end is very choppy. So if I say something that someone else has already stated, I want to apologize upfront. But I do want to thank Ms. Ward for her presentation. And I think it behooves us to go back and dig into all of the recommendations that came from the surveys that you collected from individual counselors in the field. And because there were some excellent recommendations that are coming forward through that work. And I think it behooves us to take that information and make a determination of how we would as a board, based on the responsibilities entrusted to us, take those and perhaps modify. As an example, you mentioned that the recommendation was to update the EPP standards related to the counseling position. There are also other recommendations that I think definitely need to go out to the districts and I would like to be, I would like you to share, if you could, the game plan to ensure that the directors, the administrators are aware of some of the other concerns that have been expressed by the counselors. So I'm going to stop and just allow you to respond to that question because there are things that I think the districts need to be aware that this is the way that their counselors are feeling in general. And I don't know how those raw results look or how they've been summarized in a way that would be helpful for those in the field, the administrators to see. So again, I'm going to stop. And I apologize if you're speaking, I am not able to hear you.
Slur advice was to bring together with principals advice. Because we want to make sure that school counselors but obviously we want to make sure, as I said. But we do want to make sure that across the state. So it is definitely something.
Again, I have not been able to hear your response and I know that those that are in the room, especially Dr. Morrison and Mr. Ebby could share with me what you, what your response was. I do not want you to have to repeat it, but it's coming in that I virtually cannot hear you or it's very choppy. So thank you.
Wanted to remind the board of a couple of things that are relevant to the presentation we just heard and thank you so much. That was really helpful and I look forward to having more conversations with you. This work that you're leading is so important to the state. So as Mike pointed out, in 2017, this board did pass that 80/20 ratio in terms of the split of counselors' time. We had a lot of discussion, Mike was leading a lot of it at the time about, you know, whether we should have time sheets. How do we ensure that counselors will be able to sort of maintain that balance? I'm looking forward to digging into some of the educator survey data, particularly from the counselors, and see if we can see through those survey responses, how, how close we're getting to that 80/20 and some of the other information that I think might be in that educator survey that would help us understand where we need to go as a state to further get to that balance. Also, the four-year plans are in state board policies, so the middle school and high school policies have those requirements. And I'd love to continue to talk with you about how we make sure that they're more than just a box checked, you know, that they really are active, living plans that inform the student's trajectory and course selection. My notes. Then, two questions. So the EPP standards, what's the timeline and the plan for updating those? I think you mentioned that they were out of date and that seems like one thing that we should be thinking about as a board. I'll ask you my other, oh, you have a microphone, okay, go for it.
Is it, okay, we're good. I don't know how long it takes you, like, I don't know the process of, you know, how long that would need to take. But if, if we could definitely do that within, that would be great. I don't know if that's feasible, but.
I mean, you'll probably be the one leading some of the engagement work and figuring out what the standards change need to look. And then for us, it'll be two readings, so, you know, it probably is the better part of a year. But that's why I'm wondering, we should get started probably.
Yes, absolutely.
But that'd be great, we can work on that together. And then my other question is just more of planting a seed and I know some of your colleagues have heard, our team say this, but I just wonder, back to Daryl's point, I mean, even if we get to a one to 250 ratio, it's still not adequate for what we need in terms of college and career advising. And it makes me wonder, we've had lots of discussion about the add-on endorsement pathway that the department's beginning to offer. And this seems like a perfect place to add, you know, for teachers who want to take on that additional college and career advising. Because I mean, a high school teacher myself, I mean, that was something that you were doing some informally anyway, but it just, it strikes me as a place that might be ripe for a model like that to add capacity.
Absolutely, I mean, one to 250 still is, is quite a number if we really want for individualized college and career counseling to happen. I've been fortunate enough to be in a school where there is one to 76 and that was amazing. And that's what it could be, enough for us to be able to really, you know, work with students nine through 12, creating an individualized for post-secondary readiness. So absolutely, I think, and like I said, teachers are, you all do that anyway, you know, as a high school teacher, like you said, you do that anyway because you're a person that the kids trust. And they, you know, ask you, hey, what should I do when I get out of high school? And so, you know, if we can train teachers to do that or allow them to do that through an endorsement, I do think that that would be.
Yeah, and just I would add, I mean, if you, numbers, I'm sitting here, we have 180 school days. Alright, so if you're one to 350, one to 500, you have 180 school days. That starts, give the finite terms, how available you are. And just to overlay the importance of this, we're still, this is post-remote, mid-pandemic, I mean, level of emotional that inform how we make decisions on classes, how we're looking at fellows, how we're looking how we're looking at what's in front of us. So yeah, that I also would just agree that we can't underscore how important this is and it needs top of the list. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is master plan, so on.
Alright, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members. I'm Amy Owen, Director of Policy and Research at the State Board, joined by my colleague, Ally Gaffey, interim Director of Charter Schools. And we're going to briefly recap the 2020 through 2021 Board Master Plan and then look ahead to the one for the upcoming academic year, which is up for first and final reading tomorrow. I'll briefly discuss the master plan of the previous year. You have in your member meeting materials, a memo that goes into more depth about areas of achievement, what is on, what is in progress and on track and areas that encountered delays. And I'll talk about why some of that came about in just a moment. As you know, the board is required by law to adopt a master plan governing the vision for education for each school year. And we also adopt five-year strategic goals. We had goals from 2015 through 2020. And last year, we went through a very comprehensive stakeholder engagement process to set five-year goals for the 2020 through 2025 period. The master plan each year makes incremental progress toward those five-year goals. The goal, we had five goals, the first three are student focused, a goal focused on elementary school, one on middle school and one on high school, which leads into college and career preparation. Goal four is about high-quality teachers and leaders. And goal five is more system focused about having, students having strong educational options in a variety of settings. Throughout that process, we tried to look for ways that the board could have influence through the policies and systems it establishes, things within the board's locus of control rather than necessarily big, broad, sweeping things that would depend on other agencies or districts or other folks to actually carry out. I will say that the strategic goals and the master plan I will say that the strategic goals and the master plan for this past year were largely drafted prior to March 2020, when most of our lives changed very significantly. There were some changes that we were able to incorporate before the master plan was adopted that summer. However, there are also things that became more or less important along the way, and other things that became not as feasible to accomplish in a one-year timeframe. An example of something that really changed in scope, there was a goal about chronic absenteeism and convening stakeholders to talk about it and best practices for addressing absenteeism. Those are still important, but this looked much, much different in a virtual and hybrid setting than it would have if we were only in person and we were able to convene groups of principals to talk about strategies. That was not something that was going to be realistic. So we did make progress toward goals in ways like making sure the attendance expectations for continuous learning plans were refined over time for when districts were in a more hybrid mode. And finally, the master plan for this past year included many action steps that were regarding data collection and research to inform the policy work moving forward, which made sense given that it was year one, working toward these five-year goals. We needed to gather some data and information and able to be able to move forward. So as I said, a more comprehensive memo is available with your meeting materials, but if you have any questions about last year's progress, I know staff will be happy to answer them, Dr. Morrison herself, or any of the others on staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ally to look ahead to this coming year.
Thank you. Okay, so looking ahead to 2122, this master plan includes updates to our benchmarks based on the feedback that y'all provided, as well as some new annual action steps that move us closer to our 2025 goals. So the updates further emphasize the need for ongoing data collection and analysis of our new and revised programs as a result of special session legislation, and highlights a need for additional stakeholder engagement to develop, refine, and implement our policies over time. Specifically, the 2122 master plan broadens our definition of reading to include all literacy skills and allows us to review multiple data sources to track progress. It also removes the statewide chronic absenteeism benchmark, as Amy was just discussing, and establishes a new benchmark focused on how our leaders impact teacher retention. So with that, I will pause here and open up for any questions.
I have a question. This is, I guess, for Amy. This goes back to 2020. Actually, it may be. Where are they? As I look at, as I look at the master plan for last year, there are several items that appear that we are waiting on information, such as by June 30, 2021, produce a commission to report on LEA's implementation of current motion retention law and policy. There was one on beginning to undertake relevant action based on a report. This was associated with a study at TARA. This action's pending the approval of data request. There's one on ready graduate indicator, advanced placement, oh. Says by twenty, by June 30, 2021, commission report regarding district-by-district analysis of the current access to preparation for and performance of ACT, military readiness, and early post-secondary environments. Department, pretty of the state staff, this data in June 2021, continue to wait access. One in June 30, identify and begin to undertake relevant actions based on a report, such as rural imposter revision, and it's trying to get some access to data, so.
Sure.
I'm curious to know where, where we stand on that, because that's obviously important.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that question. Obviously, it's very important that we maintain data security and data privacy and have appropriate safeguards in place. So the department has a protocol for requesting access to data. And in terms of recent data requests, we had a data request for school counselor survey data that the department filled earlier this summer. Erica is now working to analyze that data now, and will be able to share it out with board members and portions of that data as well in a more public fashion. We did recently receive permission to access the Ready Grad data, and that is the next project to be teed up, looking at how access and success on those vary by district and by type of early post-secondary option. And then the final one about promotion and retention was a request that the Tennessee Education Research Alliance at Vanderbilt put into the department a little while back. I'm not quite sure of the status, and I don't want to put our few department colleagues here on the hot seat, but we continue to follow up and make sure that everybody understands the proposals, understands what data is requested and why, and how it will be treated in a safe and secure manner.
Thank you. Other questions?
I will just say thank you so much to all the board members for your ongoing feedback throughout the master plan process this spring. Your input is what gives us the vision and direction to help set the goals for the forthcoming year, and we really appreciate your time and feedback.
Proposed licensure action. Todd Madison.
Morning, members. Todd Madison, Staff Attorney for the Board. You have before you the staff, or the board staff's recommendations for educator licensure actions. At this time, I'll take any clarifications or any items for discussion at tomorrow's.
Any questions for Mr. Madison, or any request to pull out any of the particular license?
Thanks.
Uh, any further comments? Are you got any closing comments? Madam Chair, Hartgrove, if you can hear us, any, any closing comments from you?
Thank you for calling on me, and I can hear everybody now, thankfully. And I, I do want to thank everyone, again, all the presenters, as you know, I, I'm very thankful for each of you. I think we did have some key learnings today as board members that will inform our work going forward. And again, I do want to thank Mr. Eby for chairing as Vice Chairman of the Board. He, he's doing an excellent job, and I have said many times before, one day he's going to make an excellent Chairman of the Board. That's my considered opinion. But thank you all so much. I'm so sorry I have not been able to join you all today, and I will not be with you tomorrow. And again, Mr. Eby, I know you'll do a great job chairing that committee for, for the board. So thank you all so much, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and sitting here, it makes me appreciate that much more, what you do, because you're trying to juggle everything at once and keep things moving is but let me thank everyone who participated today. I thought it was a very good workshop. I thought there was a lot of good exchange of information, some better understanding, and that's the purpose of the workshop, some interface and understanding. And I think it will help the board meeting go more quickly tomorrow. I think we will have questions though, so look forward to that. And as of now, let's see, I have to declare that we, committee of the whole, for the purposes, purposes of the committee, the whole has been fulfilled, and I declare it, and the board adjourned.